Holidays are there for all the appointments.
I've been spending some time, let me look at this. We gotta change some stuff.
Yeah.
But, golly.
It's hard to work.
Okay.
Your pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second?
That's 3L. The public, okay. Review of evaluation tools.
This is his 90-day, 90-day plan that he briefed us on. I'm going through it and for near-term pieces.
Yeah.
This has, this has some good, good things. Subjective, you know, there's no hard pieces, but as far as who to meet with, identifying, these components, these are, these are a lot of good stuff, but what I was looking for, master schedule analysis.
That's, that's a hard thing. I mean, that's something that's measurable.
That is, that is measurable.
Yes.
And I thought that.
Yeah.
And I said, you know, that's for somebody new coming in, that's a pretty good thing to really get you to know the district and everything.
Yeah, for them to look at them.
Is to work, work this very hard. And of course, he's already, he's already done some stuff on it. And he's got some pieces here, AP, but profile, that's all good. Good stuff. Instruction, educational, performance, access to challenging coursework, that's all good. I saw some places here, theory of action, and then there's the high, there's the 90-day entry plan. There's a purpose, three phases, his pre-entry, his entry, and his action planning, which he's got dates for suspenses of each of these pieces, which could be easily given as a suspense to brief us on the first of October. I put it, I put it down. I'll put some, I'll put some other stuff down, but there are some dates that we can hold him to. The governance team, a board retreat is probably something that we should be scheduling. So, we gotta figure out the time to do that.
Yeah, we definitely need it.
To get away. And is that, have you done that, where you've gone away?
It has to be open to the public.
Yes.
What?
That's why retreat is such a bad word.
Yeah, because it's not really a retreat.
It's gotta be open to the public. So, you can't do like the retreats we used to do where everybody just got it out on the table and you dealt with it.
Right.
You can't do that?
You have to have the public.
Oh, what does Robin, Robin want you to know?
Well, they did a retreat, but they did it as an executive session and they held it at the water, we for Jasper Water.
And that was pre-John Dowling. I don't think we'll get away with that now.
Yeah, it was when, actually they've done, well, yeah, it's definitely pre-John because they did it with other Valerie meeting with them, and then they did it when Jeff came to the board. So, in both places, when the board did the retreats, they were always, we always had them.
We can't do it.
Off-site.
Yeah, we can't do it.
Okay.
We can do it, but the public has to be there.
And then, that's what we used to do then.
Yeah, so it's like a work session.
A work session.
Yeah.
Oh, a work session.
Yeah, right, that's what it's gonna be. Here's, this is really K in his piece.
Oh, yeah.
And that's got deliverables.
Yes, it does have deliverables. And you know, I, if I was him, I sure wanna change some things in this organizational chart.
Exactly. You know, that's.
If he doesn't, uh...
Well.
Well, I, I think, you know, he, he, yeah.
We picked the wrong guy. He doesn't change that organization.
No, and I've come into a highly functional organization. I didn't change much.
Right.
I was just, I'm just here for the light and have, have a good time. But I've come into some ones where the guy was relieved before me.
Yeah.
And you gotta, you gotta take names and change things right there.
Gotta ring the bell.
So, this is.
Everybody, everybody's gone, so he's got an opportunity to fill in.
Yeah.
And create his own organization. That's a deliverable.
And?
That's our number one goal.
Yeah.
So, he's gonna...
I was gonna ask you.
Oh, sorry.
You were saying that you can't have a retreat because of what?
It has to be open to the public.
Says who?
Foye.
Huh?
Foye. You can't, you know, there's limited.
We have to have a, Connie County have a retreat.
I know.
We need, we need to, we need to do what we need to do instead of getting the public. So, what, what are you gonna do to us?
Well, we can have the retreat. We just have to, we have to notice it and the public has to be there. That's our county council.
Or have, have the opportunity to come if they choose.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. That's why county council, or that's why Beaufort City Council must, I'm not sure my county.
Because we used to have retreats.
Yeah, you can't, just can't have it closed where everybody's really on this, which is a really good thing.
Which is, I know, that's what we need.
Yeah.
Yeah. We need, we need an executive session to, because we need to have a time where we really get down to it.
We need a facilitator to take us through that.
Yes.
You also had proposals from, um, Dr. Adams, where in, in that when you will hire them, you also has the proposal of doing that transition, of doing a board retreat with the new superintendent. And they, and you had that as them being the facilitator. That was one of the proposals.
Boy, he would be good.
We can do it. We just, it just has to be open to the public and the press.
Because I think that was the next step in the contract after you hired your superintendent. Then, the next step of pre, phase was the transition in the board retreat with the superintendent, new superintendent.
Was that included in his contract?
I think that's an addition, that, that, that was an additional.
Okay.
But that was a proposal that when you did, looked at the contract that they put.
But could we have a executive session as part of that to discuss board interpersonal relationships or something?
Board conduct.
Or conduct.
Yeah. Contracts, personnel matters, and there's a third thing.
Legal.
Yeah, legal advice. We have legal, legal advice. Now, only three ways you can have an executive session.
Yeah.
You know, that's my understanding.
Yeah, but I think you're right.
By statute, and I read Foye, and that's pretty much they just laid it out there.
Yeah.
But we can have it.
Just pick a time when everyone else is at Ben.
You know, if the public's there.
Five o'clock on the morning.
Just ignore them.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it would be refreshing if the board just honestly got it all out on the table.
We need to, otherwise how are we gonna move forward?
Well, the facilitator thing, you know, got quashed the last time we suggested.
Well, that was the wrong guy.
Right, but I think it used David Adams.
It wasn't the guy, it was the concept.
Well, well, the guy was wrong too.
Yeah, I agree. He wasn't a real facilitator.
No.
But the, the concept is what crashed. But we could, we could bring that up, but let's focus on getting the student achievement.
Student achievement, yeah, that's, that's the key for the tool.
Okay.
Do, do you have the possibility of getting the rubrics that were used inside each of these boxes for how they measure?
Um, well, I thought...
You know, we have, we have these, but, but there's gotta be some goals, there's gotta be some, some specifics in here behind these boxes.
Right.
To give you your points, you know, to figure out your points.
Let's see, I'm trying to, um... These are possible, you know, pieces of evidence for performance.
Yeah.
I don't know that they're, I'd have to go back to the website. You know, or maybe I could even follow up and ask them for that, what was in there.
See, these are the subjective pieces, and it's, because, you know, community ser, well, survey, a copy of the community survey would be.
Right.
Would be valuable to have.
Like, okay, meeting agendas, affirming that, these things.
I'm looking for instructional things like graduation rates and SAT scores and all that type of thing.
Right. It's in here. I, I saw it.
Did you?
Mm-hmm.
While we're thinking about that, do we agree that this weighting is an important part of any tool we use?
Absolutely.
So, if we can establish that.
Yes.
Absolutely.
The sections are...
You know, what I was thinking about is how to score it.
Mm-hmm.
It's, what if every board member scored it? Name on it, scored it, and then Robin or somebody consolidate the score.
Mm-hmm.
And so that we have a, and that's the first sheet, and then behind them are all of our individual scores. So, that way the superintendent can go and say, "Golly, I thought I did better than that in this particular area. Who graded me down?"
Mm-hmm.
And then I would, well, Guyer did. Why maybe I needed to have a little talk with him?
Ask your wife.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree with that. So, I, and we weighed it, and the weight is based on our goals, right?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So, are you keeping the weight, the number, the 20, 15 for each of these headings?
Sorry.
So, like for government weight?
Oh, no, no, those are internal weights.
Okay, so you're gonna do different...
We're talking about...
This side, okay.
Yeah, at the very back where it weights them, like right back here.
Okay.
This, this shows you that.
Professional.
Governance and instructional leadership has a different weight than community or staff or whatever.
And they call it the component.
Component.
Weight of the component.
Right.
On this one, this little sheet. Yeah. The one they used to use, when they did use it for Jeff, that was similar, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, um, you know, I think, if we can't find it, I mean...
I bet they're out.
Yeah.
Just, just ask me for it.
I know you sent it out, but I haven't...
I sent it out. I thought you put it up and we could get that. It says, you know, that professional standards for educational leaders is where this stuff came from.
That's it, yeah. And when it said, what, who?
It's the National Policy Board.
National Policy Board.
For Educational Administration.
Okay.
2015.
Yeah.
There probably isn't anything more we say.
Oh.
I could look. I'll look for this. Yeah, see, a lot of this stuff is based on McCrell. Have you guys heard of them? It's a Denver research, educational research organization, and a lot of times, like professional development for educators comes through the McCrell group. It's been vetted. If they pulled it together, they approved it, then you know it's, it's based in research. So...
You know, I have to be honest with you. I went back and looked at all the policies and goals and procedures and stuff, and it reminds me of some staff work I used to see where the staff would just put everything possible out there to give to somebody to say, "Okay, we gotta, we gotta, we know everything, but we gotta get it down, we gotta distill this down to what really makes sense." Why?
We had the same conversation before you came in.
Before you came in, yeah, yeah.
There's all this keys, all the keys, there's just too much.
Too much, exactly.
Too much. We need to retain focus.
Right.
Three goals, here it is.
Yeah.
These are your three goals. You know, this one is 40%, this 30%, this 30%.
So, we had, well, we had educational leadership for re-achievement gap or...
Achievement.
Achievement.
Recruiting, retain, or recruiting and retaining, and financial, like those are, those are three of the five goals we currently have.
Yeah.
The other two are the board's goals.
Yeah, right.
Supervising and...
She'll bring it down, she'll bring it down in a second.
Right.
So, yeah, if we can stick to three goals, and we can have subsets underneath that, but if you get too much...
We don't watch many subsets either, otherwise it gets lost in weeds.
Right, oh, right, right.
And we were talking about, so every year it gets revised.
Sure.
Because some goal might, you know...
Sure. It's gonna be a living dog.
It's a specific goal.
Yes. No, I, I just, I was just mind-boggling when I was going through it all, just thinking, "Come on, how can anybody, how can anybody expect..."
That's, that's the one, um...
All right, so he's got, I'm looking at the, the one they used to use.
Okay, which, do we, we have it on?
Yeah.
Okay.
She emailed it out, but I...
Yeah, I did, what, was it, which, what number was it? Because there were...
I had, it should be 13, 14.
Okay.
I gave you three. There was a 13, 14, 14, 15, and 15, 16.
And was that...
14, 15, and 15, 16 were the same ones, just a couple of words were changed. So, 13, 14 was the one, um, that board members took an individually ranked, and then if there was a comment on each of the page, like the first stint.
Yeah.
Then I added the, um, they, he, he didn't get the individual ones, he got a combination of, so if it said proficient and everybody did, uh, proficient, it was checked that, or whatever the comments were at the bottom, he got each of the individual comments, they were added to the total one.
That's simple.
And, um, but proficient was the, what was, there was, there wasn't anything less than proficient, right?
Profession accomplished and distinguished.
Yeah. I mean, we hope that, uh, you know, that he's more than, and he's proficient at least, but you do, I think you have to have a box on there that lets you indicate, yeah.
There's always some needs and prayers.
Right. Like the, this one says ineffective, minimally effective, effective, and highly effective. Right.
The second one had, um, the second one had exceptional, proficient, and needs improvement.
Okay.
The 14, 15, and 15, 16 had those.
That's good. You always need that.
Yeah.
So, that was what was on.
Robin, when did you, I, I know I looked at these at home, now I can't find them. What?
Um, I sent it on Monday, yesterday.
Yesterday.
I sent it Monday at 1:20.
Superintendent evaluation issues?
That's it, yeah.
I got it.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I don't like proficient accomplished and distinguished. I like...
Well, should, they'll change it for next year.
Yeah.
So, the 14, 15, 15, 16 was changed.
Yeah. Exceptional, proficient, and needs improvement.
Yeah. I mean, I, I remember looking at them, I, I wasn't sure we could salvage, because I was hoping we could salvage what had already been done and just tweak it, but I'm not sure we can.
Proficient is a big, is a big area. I really like ineffective, minimally effective, and highly effective. It, it gives you a little more room in the proficient area.
To...
To delineate somebody as proficient.
Yeah.
You're, you're doing okay, or you're doing really okay, but you could do better.
Right.
Versus just proficient, it's just a, it's just a wide, you know, exceptional is, is narrow, not efficient is narrow, is relatively narrow, is specific too. It's like, it's like grading average, you know? Cs and Bs.
Yep, that's right. We have to, we have to have a way to show that we're interested in Cs.
All children, all children are above average.
Yeah. All right, so, um, is it our consensus that this tool that used to be used is not, is not a tool we wanna pursue?
I, I would agree with that.
All right, then we go.
Okay.
So, now we got this tool.
It needs, it needs, obviously...
We need to make it our own.
Make it our own, we gotta get rid of the union.
Customize it.
Yes.
Customize it, but, golly, it's...
This is the, this is the tool.
It's powerful.
This is the tool we're gonna use. All right, right, we got our tool.
I mean, you guys, you like it, you like it, David.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that percentage part, yeah.
Say, a lot of the things I'm used to. I'm used to this format.
Yes, I am too.
And that's, I might like it because I'm used to it.
Yeah.
But, I, it works, it's always been pretty good for me.
This type of format always seems more neutral.
Yes.
Not slanted, it's, when you do something like this that brings in percentages and stuff, I always feel like it's, I don't know, if I'm explaining it correctly, but kind of not biased toward anybody. It's just like, here it is.
Oh, yeah, I like the, the more numbers you put on things, the less float you...
Right, and, and you have, you have...
People can misunderstand.
That's right.
When you say this is 40%,
Right.
It's 40%.
Right.
You can't change that.
Right.
Right.
You can't say, "Oh, you know, really." And those should focus people, because if you know that's 40% of your evaluation, then you're gonna put 40% of your effort on that, or more. All right, so, we're gonna use this tool.
And I also like the weight, the weighting that they have on here as far as, you know, instructional leadership, 30%, um, business and finance, 20, um, and governance and board relations, 20, and then 15 and 15. I, I, I sat there and thought about, would I move that around any? I don't think so. Like, when I look at it, instructional is the most important.
Yeah.
I think.
It's our number one goal.
Number one.
Number one.
And then the budget and finance is, is important, and our governance is important. Uh, and, well, you know, so is community relations, but not as much, and staff relationship is important, but...
Staff relations is part of governance.
Well, staff, staff relations helps you make the...
It's part of...
Make sure achievements too.
If you consider, if you consider governance to be the culture.
So, it's, it's part of it.
Yeah.
How you work.
Exactly. But it also, it will also let you know if, if you're making, sometimes you can make near-term gains while you're killing everybody, but you're not gonna sustain it that way.
Right.
And that, that way you could capture that.
Yes, that's a big mistake people make.
Yes, yes.
Not a mistake, it's something people overlook.
Right.
Short-term goals are more difficult. So, we got our tool. How, how, you know, how, how do we wanna tweak it?
Yeah, how do we wanna personalize it? Do you want to use all five, or do you wanna just go down to three?
I want, I want, we have our goals on there.
Right.
I want these headings to be our goals, except for the soft skills, because that's an important part, which is the community relations.
But we have, we have the main three goals.
Yeah.
With one goal being more important than the other.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you.
30% proficient. Okay, I'm with you.
That's just what we decided we were gonna do. Um, but, um, this was the strategic one. See, the third component of this, they, they actually have, I don't know, if you guys, okay, so they have the professional practice adjusted score, student growth, which isn't on here, that's something different, and progress toward district-wide goals is another percent. So, what's on page 14? Is that what we were just looking at? About 65%? And that might be too complicated for us to get this used from the get-go, but it might be something as page 14 is missing.
Page 14 is missing.
That was a good one.
Yeah, okay, let me pull it up here and see, as it says...
Page 14 is missing.
Page adjusted score, page 14, well, you know what, I think I gave her that stuff last time, and just, but you, you...
I just used what was in...
Yeah, page 15 is just a way of taking, putting them all together.
All together, right.
And weighting them to get a final score.
Right. So, here's how you do student growth, and here's how you do...
Yeah.
I don't know, did you guys have that one?
Yeah, I've got the student growth and the board restorant, just to correct.
So, this one then has gotta be that all of these added together, so you get one score here.
Right.
And then you...
Then you have the...
It's only 65%, but it's 65% of the grand total.
Right, and then you have student growth, right?
Student growth, and then you have progress toward district-wide goals, it's 10%.
Right.
So, when you look at, at the top where it says like E, F, the structural leadership is E, then on page 15 comes F determining the professional, it looks like there's not a 14 in there unless there...
Yeah, page 14 seems to be missing.
But it goes E, F, and G.
Right.
I should have looked at that more closely.
H, uh, it's got, yeah, it goes E, F.
F and G.
Doesn't show, doesn't show anything on 14.
Right, it looks like there's something.
Yes, it has something, because it references back to 14.
Yeah, so maybe...
There must be something in 14.
There must be a trick that they use to see if you're paying attention.
Paying attention, because...
Yeah.
I'm, I'll go...
Okay, so we're gonna tweak this tool.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, things like, in the staff, we gotta get rid of the union, but I was wondering, when I read that, do we include, this says labor relations, do, we don't include the education association union?
No, because we don't, we don't barb and...
We don't, we don't say anything about labor relations.
Yeah, okay, so we can, that can just be included.
Yeah, yeah. Unions are big in Michigan, let me tell you.
They're big in New York, John, I'm used to dealing with them.
They are, they are in Washington State.
And they do, um...
And in Pennsylvania.
They do four shooter thing.
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
So, near-term, back here at the, the goals are more...
Right. Right, and this one is ours, and this one is ours, so really, it is, the superintendent's our student, you have to qualify, and physical responsibility, and we have under student achievement, oh, no, I was...
No, Wilson, Wilson.
We can put a lot of stuff under student achievement.
Right, yes.
Right.
We can subdivide it.
Right, that's gonna happen.
And then, and that would probably lead to this.
Yes.
Which is the results section of the strategic one, which is too detailed probably to be in evaluation, but not too detailed to measure progress.
Right. Well, and...
This is gonna be a bear to kind of...
Student growth. Student growth. Actually, there's a lot of stuff on there that, we don't have those exams anymore, we don't, so what we need to start out with is, you know, our, our test, we need our, our state testing to know what's being tested, and our map testing that we do. We do map in then addition to the test. Now, what we don't know, I've asked this question for, it looks like in the primary grades, the only formative assessment that they do across our district-wide is the Fontas Canal. Fontas Canal is just really telling you kind of a soft reading level for kids, and I asked before how frequently, was, remember, and they say, "Well, you know, it should be done." So, so what, that's a question we have to find out. What are we using in the primary grades to, so that we can look at growth and look at achievement?
And that's in every grade, is that correct? It's not like the third grade?
Fontas Canal should just be kindergarten first and second.
Kindergarten first and second.
Yeah.
Before you go to the third grade.
Yeah.
In which, we have the scores for the third grade reading.
We should, yes.
Yes.
Because with map, maps, map, map testing starts in third grade.
Because that's the state holdback thing, right? They're not at level, grade three, they get holdback, they can be, that's states, don't you?
Okay.
So, there's gotta be...
Well, we should... Well, we should have.
There's gotta be measures on that.
I, what concerns me is it doesn't, you know, another question I wanna know, do we have any math data for our first and second graders? We should have, we should have.
There should be some data to check for that.
We should have, and if we had.
See, here, in the old results, this was for twenty-ten, it's got kindergarten students who attained seventy percent of their target, and it's got reading and math.
Okay.
We gotta find out how major all this is. What I really liked about this was, one, it was obviously somebody who understood statistics, and I appreciated that, but I liked the fact that it was, every grade had targets.
Yes.
Every grade.
Right.
So, it didn't get all mashed together.
Right.
Saying, all students should, now, here's what first grade, here's second graders, but, I mean, I really liked the fact that they did that. So, when we get around to, and one of the things in our scope, I think that we left out was repopulating the results section of the strategic governance manual. We focused on the evaluation tool.
Right.
Well, we gotta repopulate this, because otherwise we don't have to, we could say we do strategic governance, but if you've left out this whole section, you're retarded.
So should we add that now? I mean, we can just amend what our scope was, right?
Right, I, I think we should, if you're in agreement.
Yeah, let's do that, absolutely.
But this is a bear to do, but I, you know, we're not gonna have it done by September first, I don't think, but I think we should do it, because that's how all this started in my mind, was, we looked, when we were doing policy, we said, hey, these goals are from twenty-ten.
Now, now you're saying we should do it, but.
I mean, we're not.
But, shouldn't we give that to the staff to do for us, and say, this is, these are the areas?
I can sit with staff.
Sit with staff.
And do it, I, you know, I used to have, write goals for my school, and we always had to write just like this, reading, math, where we stood, so I'm very familiar with this, so I can help with it, but I think involving staffs are really important.
Absolutely.
Well, I agree, upon all of this stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're the ones, they're the ones who came up.
But we, we approved the final product.
Right.
Sent it off to the board, but yeah, we're responsible to make sure this guy's done.
Right. These were, these are the board's goals.
Yep.
These are where the goals that Jeff was measuring on, and goals hadn't changed, so you would have to establish after what Rodriguez's goals.
It'd be, yeah, kinda funny if they were different for the board's goals. I always thought that was kind of peculiar, that he had goals that were different.
I found page fourteen, by the way.
Did you?
Yeah.
But, yeah, I, I.
The one, the one we need to print it out?
No, you know what it is, it's just a blank page, actually, what it is, is, it's like, so it's kinda like the recording page, so you take the performance indicator, and the goal, and then the evidence, what you're citing, and then you're rating it, and then, so comments by the Board of Education, comments by the superintendent, so it's just really.
Okay, so, yeah, but it's part of the evaluation.
Yeah.
But it's the comments piece.
Yeah, and the kind of where you show how you're coming up with that score.
Right, right.
That's what it is.
Okay. That's correct.
So, we, did we get, we're gonna.
And just repopulate the results section.
Right. So, we can put this aside.
Yeah, that's good.
I just, I admire the folks that sat down and did this.
Yes.
Because I know you don't do this overnight. We're on a, we're on a good track at one point.
Right.
In my homework. Okay. We got our evaluation tool, we added this goal. Teacher is in the topics.
I, I really think we ought to have set up a product timeline. For example, I just wrote something out, I just, I said, Dr. Rodriguez, you need to have a plan to pass the referendum to us by first of September. You have time to get out there, look around, and say, this is how I'm gonna pass this thing. He's, his goal, pass the referendum in November. Plan to address the budget. To start the budget process in October, first of October. We, we, we really need to start it in October. Reorganization plan, what's your reorganization plan gonna be, February? Because he really, he's really, you have to have it in time to have it in the budget.
Right.
Because he's gonna have to shift things around to make his reorganization plan. He's not gonna have a whole lot of flexibility to put his reorganization plan, plus you've got people with contracts, you gotta give, you gotta give notification if you're gonna make some changes, so, he needs to understand, you gotta give him at least six months to understand who's who and what they do, and, and come up with and say, this is how I want to reorganize. Now, that's not to say that he can't do some, putting people in places now, but he will then know the strengths and weaknesses of the people he's got, he'll know his span of control issues.
See, I, yeah, I would, I'd say it'd be great for having the people in it, but I wanna see the org chart without people in it.
Oh yeah.
All before that.
Yeah.
This is how I wanna structure this place.
Well, yeah, so there should be, there should be, you know, say, maybe first of November, October, end of October, something like that.
After he has ninety days.
Right.
Right.
I want him to say.
Say, here's an org chart.
This is how I'm gonna structure the organization.
Right, and then he, then he has to fill in the pieces.
Now I gotta buy people to fill these spots.
Right, right, buy, and, and that has to be done by February, so we can get it in the budget.
Yep.
Results from his ninety-day entry plan, first of October. And, he's, he's got, he's given us his plan. I'd say, okay, pal, here it is.
You know, do you think we should, for this, use this tool, and this first-year plan would be, would look dramatically different than the plans going forward? I'm hearing what you're saying in this first-year plan under governance, or whatever, or whatever agree, the category, that we put, have an org chart, because we wanted, weren't we charged with kinda sitting down with him, right when he comes, and giving him his plan? So, it would be, or.
Talking to him.
Talking to him.
Yeah, okay.
We need to give him the draft.
Yeah, so.
We need to tell him, and we sort of thinking.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And come back with a reasonable period of time.
Right, so like what you just said, the organization chart, we want an org chart, and put in a date by there.
Right.
And, that's measurable.
Right.
Because, you know, so.
This, this piece here is an end of the year.
It is an end of, right, and maybe not even the first year.
And, and maybe not.
Because.
Or maybe, or maybe the first year is just the baseline year.
It could be, yeah, yeah.
You see?
Yeah.
This, this is a baseline for the board, this is a baseline for you.
Yeah, that's a, that's a way to look at it, yeah.
Because, by the end of the next year, we'll see progress.
I mean, the org chart is critical.
Yes.
Yeah, that's part of the governance.
That's part of the governance, yeah, so, under governance on here, we could just say, highlight, this is.
Organization chart.
Organizational chart. What else did you say, Dick? What was written in your notes? You said a couple other things that I thought, I was trying to process.
Ninety-day plan results.
The ref, you know, the referendum.
Oh, referendum.
The referendum, he's, he's gotta get on top of that right away.
Yeah.
Because he's gonna, he's gonna be the face that's gonna go out there and inform everybody.
Uh, that needs to be in his ninety-day plan.
Yeah.
So, he needs to adjust that.
Right.
Because that's a big deal.
Right. And frankly, you know, I, I would tell him, your first, your first challenge is to pass that referendum.
Yeah.
And so, don't, don't think that it's a free.
There's a bigger challenge every day, sure.
Yeah, but, but that's your, that's your big measure, right?
Yeah.
And that's very quantifiable, and it's gonna be difficult.
It is very difficult, so.
We're gonna have to.
So then we, you know, when we're sitting down, and it fails fifty-one to forty-nine, does it get credit for going from twenty-eight to forty-nine? As a consequence, we have to.
And is kinda what we have to think about, and, you know, I hate to say it, but I don't think we're gonna get an eleven-o vote on a referendum. You think we are?
I don't know, with everything in my pocket, we won't get eleven votes. I, in fact, I'd say we're not gonna get an eleven vote on anything except the term. We have people who are determined.
Robin?
I think we'll get, if we can get a nine to two, I think we go, if we get.
Nine to two is it?
If we get an eight to three, we don't go.
Okay, I don't, and I think eight to three, I don't know whether we can get nine to two. Robin, are you gonna have a two?
Hold on.
Yeah.
You're gonna have two different evaluations, or are you gonna have a ninety-day evaluation plan, and then you're having this as your baseline at an annual, so are you having two different tool instruments? Or are you gonna use this instrument?
No, that ninety-day will feed into this.
Into this, so you'll still use this as an instrument, but you'll be different from ninety days and today.
Right, we should probably have a ninety, a one eighty, and a three sixteen.
Yeah, we could even color code the blocks or something, I mean, we might get.
Yeah.
But, yeah. Or after the ninety days.
There's a teacher coming in.
I know, I'm sorry, but after the ninety days, maybe we just even take it off the table, and then we go back and, and add the next forty day, you know, the next.
Next ninety days.
Next ninety days, something like that.
We could certainly do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Need to hammer that kinda stuff out.
We do.
I agree with you, the first ninety days is pretty much laid out, except the referendum is gonna.
Yeah.
Has to be jammed in there.
So, in your notes.
This is the tool we use.
The ninety days is what he's already provided, or are you gonna add more to that? The referendum was one, and org chart is, is this in here, or the org chart is another item that you're adding to the ninety days?
That, that's after the ninety days, isn't it?
But you said you wanted to see that at the beginning.
I don't need the names of them, I just need the chart. I think one of the things, more to good of saying from passing line, I would say, deliverable that is a chart.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How you're, how you're gonna work on that.
Right, right, no, that's, that could be added to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because everything should have a deliverable.
Exactly, yeah.
And that's, you know, that's probably our next thing is to, just make sure everything's got a deliverable.
Got a deliverable.
And it's not, I don't think.
And if it doesn't, I mean, then we can, we come up with one, exactly.
Do you want me to take that and copy it, so that you, if, if we hold the board members?
All the board members have it.
We all have that.
Right.
But, whether they can get their hands on it now.
You know what, oh, you know what, you can meld it to, I do have an electronic, I have an electronic.
Okay.
I think it's a good thing also to let him know that we did pay attention to him when he brought this up.
Oh yeah.
And that we obviously liked what we saw, and, so, rather than start from scratch for his first ninety days.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Right.
Go with what you, what you gave us.
Right, so that we're not throwing any curveballs at him either, other than the referendum. Like, he knew, he knew about the referendum, that it was coming, yeah. And, maybe there won't be one.
Well, what we have to do as a board is, we have to do what congressional committees do when they decide to put a bill up for the, for the vote of the whole Congress, is, okay, what do you need, what do you need, what do you need, what do you need to pass this? And we have to compromise. No one's gonna be, if everybody's extremely happy with the referendum, it's probably wrong. Everybody's gonna have some things that they don't particularly like, but you gotta give some to get some. Now, we just have to have people that can understand doing that.
That'll get us to nine-two.
Nine to two, I think you could go.
That's my goal, and I.
Nine to two is reasonable.
Nine to two.
Eleven, eleven zero is unattainable, as far as I'm concerned.
I think the setup's already worn off for that, actually.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I'm not looking over there, so I, do you guys have something?
No, no.
Because I'm not looking over, actually.
No, I agree, you, you might, it might be eight-three, too.
I don't know that we can go with eight-three. That's gonna be, that's gonna be really tough, to send it out there, but I don't know that we'll ever get any better.
Right, it, depends how active those three are. Now, we had people in town halls last time, voting against this, I was, that was unusual. I'm, you know, I, I, there's things I don't care for in there, but we gotta, it's been so long, I mean, I think Herb made a good point, it's been ten years. You gotta do something, for eleven years, you gotta do, can't, can't keep doing this.
I haven't heard anyone complain about the first option, though, have they?
Yeah, we have.
About components in the first option.
Well, the first question?
Yeah.
First question.
Well, the Kate's gotta come up.
But that's in the second question.
There was Kate in the first one.
No.
No, it's in the second, but.
It's in the second, there's no Kate in the first question.
The three different Kate options are all in the second question.
All in the second question.
Yeah.
So if we can all agree on the first question, and then the public decides on the second question, we pick out the.
We also have to build it and package it, we've gotta go out to the people like Robert River and say, look, because we're doing all this new construction, we're gonna have eight percent money for maintenance, we're gonna be able to take care of your maintenance issue at Robert, we have, we'll have the eight percent money to do that. We gotta go to Ladies Island and say, look, we have to take care of schools that are overcapacity, and then we have to deal with schools that are undercapacity. That's not the first thing we have to do, you are undercapacity, so you have to understand, we need to wait, we need to relook at how we're going to consolidate or, or deal with that, so we build the right thing. And so that, you know, first things first, and people will, I think, will understand that, overcapacity versus undercapacity.
Yeah.
But we have to prove that we can execute a referendum and a construction to be able to pass the second one.
Right.
But if we don't pass the first one.
Right, that's correct.
And, and I, I'll tell you what, I don't see how we can possibly survive if we don't pass a referendum within the next two years. It's, it's gonna crumble around our ears.
That's a distinct possibility, but, let's see, let's see.
Okay, two.
The weaknesses in the last one were the numbers kept changing.
Numbers kept changing.
We haven't done this.
Right.
Herb made a good move, he brought in an archives consultant to verify the numbers.
Right, right.
Good move. All these recommendations from the, from the community, not from the board.
That's right, and from the community, and that's part, why, part of me is, I can tell...
He's made the right moves, we'll see, we'll see.
I see.
Because I really do think so much of the last one was distinct from the last one.
Oh, yeah.
I think at least fifty percent of that was in the last one, in the board, in the board.
And our marketing plan, I know we can't campaign, but it was mandatory.
Yeah, there was.
And I, I learned a lot at the conference for the School Board Association on what Aiken did, sending things home with the kids. Oh, by the way, this is, this is what...
They were right on the edge.
Here, mommy and daddy, it's right on the edge, but of informing, not campaigning.
Right, these, you don't, I think the difference that I learned from that thing was, informing is just laying out the facts.
Right.
That's all, just laying out the facts.
This is what it, this is what it is.
Yeah.
There's ways to lay out the facts, and then there's ways to lay out the facts.
Right, right.
They were smart, as they sent everything to the ethics commission before the...
Oh, that's good, I mean, yeah, that would be a good thing to do.
Get the stamp of approval.
Yeah, send it out. It's amazing the things principals will send home to their kids.
Now, the problem, the problem we gotta get is, is the funding, and so I think we can use the SICs as, as a help to raise funds.
To print things?
Print things and put things out, that's, that's how, it was a realtors group that, that the penny tax, the county council used for funds, and we need to find organizations that will contribute that, that as well for us.
It doesn't, do, are we able to send like electronically in Peach Jar? I mean, that's how they get all their, um, the elementary kids, even the high schools, that's how the parents get all the notices. There's a, it's called Peach Jar, and it's like the old bulletins or weekly things that we used to send home on paper, and now...
As long as you vet it through the ethics committee, what you're, what you're sending.
You gotta be really careful what you say.
Yeah, yeah.
And that only reaches twenty-five percent of the folks.
Right, yeah.
So you still gotta reach the other seventy, so I know that's what they're gonna do, to help us.
Yeah.
And they can't help us, they have to form an outside organization.
Right.
You roll that.
Okay, yeah.
Let me finish this, so we can turn.
Yes.
Futures end the topics, one of the ones is, when we get to the criteria part, we'll invite Joan.
Yes.
That's the criteria, I didn't think we needed her for the tools, but criteria. So for our next meeting, we, we wanna tweak this, and maybe we, do you think she can help us as far as tweaking?
The back...
Or hold off till we actually get to the criteria?
I don't know, I, I...
She's, she's, Joan is gonna be all about the academic process, and so, that's, that part of it is where we need, we need that background rubric, metrics that we can use to, to fill out the necessary instructional leadership part, and I would just focus her on that.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah.
So that, that one will be for our next meeting. We'll wait till we get to that.
For your next meeting, what, what documents? Do you want this document only, and then like in blank form, so that you can start filling in? How, how do you want to start?
I think that's the next one, I don't know what you all think.
When your electronic version, is your electronic version, is it able to be edited?
You know, I just got it off the website, so...
Probably not.
We have the software, and we have the PDF form where I can change it to Word.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe you can take it, but I mean, there's some manipulation, of course, but...
Yeah, if it can be, if it can be fixed up into Word, so that we can go into the boxes and make changes, that would be ideal.
So I'm going to try and get into these, um, it says professional standards for education leaders, and it lists the number here. I'm gonna try and figure out what those are.
Oh, perfect.
And see what I can, can find.
That'd be great, just so we can divorce it from Michigan.
Right, and make it national, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did we just have footprints, like, we have footprints, I don't know.
Actually, I was thinking we should take the Michigan out and just put AM Association of School Boards, because then somebody might think it's Massachusetts, and then they're like...
One minute's over.
One minute's over.
We don't want any of the stuff here, I don't know.
But I will, I will do that.
So for the next one, we're gonna focus on tweaking this to a section by section.
Do you need the results information in your, or no?
I don't think so, I think it's down the road.
So we're just gonna...
Down the road, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So that's gonna be our next meeting.
What do you wanna have that favor?
That's the next thing. What time is your agenda, so, what?
Four-thirty, four-thirty.
Four-fifteen, actually, is what you decided.
Oh, it is four-fifteen?
What, agenda's in?
Hey, you guys tell me dates, I'm pretty...
So, graduation is every Friday, except Friday. The college honor will be out Friday.
And I'm out for the net until after June seventh.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and then I'm also gone June eleventh through the fourteenth.
How about the tenth, which is a Monday? Does that work for you?
Yes.
We're seeing...
Okay, good, because I'm gone the next week.
Okay.
So the tenth.
Next meeting is June tenth, what time?
You do the same time?
You guys?
Two-thirty.
Yeah, two-thirty.
Two-thirty's good with me.
Great.
And one of the big advantages is we can stretch it a little bit if we have to.
Unless, do you have something else on Monday?
Well, no, I don't know.
If policy, ad hoc policy?
Yeah, I don't know about that yet.
June, yeah.
Yeah, good point.
June?
Two-thirty.
Two-thirty.
I mean, policy wouldn't be until five-thirty, they wouldn't start till five-thirty, so if you're starting at two-thirty, it would be fine.
Okay.
And do you want to do it here?
This is good for me. Face to me?
Yeah. All right. Please make a motion for adjournment meeting.
So, Lou?
Okay.
I need to find a class, and I'll pick a class, and...